You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 20th meeting for the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot
Welcome everyone to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. Coral, would you like to start the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
President Connie Grant Marosa.
Present.
Vice President Steve Hollowfield.
Present.
Member Joe Haney.
Present.
You have a quorum everybody's accounted for.
Consider agenda.
I'd like to add one item to the agenda, please. Under new business, it would be 11E, discussion on the 8th Street Building in Michigan City.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of August 6, 2025 minutes.
I noticed one thing wrong in there, and it's just basically a typo. On page three, the third sentence, under Mr. Rosenbaum's department comments, should be 10:30 a.m. instead of 9:30. Other than that, I make a motion, we accept them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
Payroll ending 8/8/2025, $1,484,590.95.
Motion to approve payroll as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claims, $2,144,316.93.
Make a motion to accept payroll as presented, or expenses presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comment. We are now opening public comment. You can come up to the podium. Just state your name and where you live.
George White, 155 Garden Street in LaPorte. I'm here this evening. Thank you all for being here, by the way. I'm here tonight to talk about Judson Road. And Judson Road is a roadway just off of Johnson Road. And portions of it have recently been abandoned by the county. And after 100 years of county maintenance on the roadway, I'm concerned about the abandonment of that roadway. I own Beacon Hills property on Legacy Hill Golf Course. And the abandonment of the roadway landlocks my property. And there's no longer, I have no longer a legal entry to the property. And of course, a legal entry is required for purposes of title. And it would be unfortunate if I was to sell the property. I would, whoever was interested in buying the property would not be able to get a loan on the property, or a title search would indicate that the property did not have a legal entrance. The portion of the roadway that I'm concerned about extends from Holton Road to the west, and it is, Judson Road has been designated as Judson Road until a week ago, when the county came out and took the signage down. The stop sign, the street signs, and other signage on the roadway. Removed the signage. My understanding is, and I've talked to County Highway, about the situation because of the paving work that's being done in the area. And I was concerned or wondering about whether that portion of the lane, Judson Road, would be paved. And it's currently not scheduled to be paved. And of course, now it's been abandoned by the county. The old Johnson Road easement was where the Judson Road lane was platted. So it was basically a longstanding roadway in the county. There are two residential properties and two businesses that are situated on the roadway. And I don't know that, they don't have other access from Johnson Road. I don't have other access from Johnson Road. I'm landlocked by the abandonment of the roadway. I guess my concern relates to the standing of the property, my property, 3.14 acres that's situated in an area that needs to be serviced by a county road. And it would be to my benefit, obviously, for that to continue. I do pay property taxes, obviously, and think that having a county roadway to service the property would be advantage to me currently and in the future. Back in 1993, there was an attempt to close that portion of Judson Road. And we came before the commission back in that time. And they upheld the roadway and the right of way of the roadway. And the obstructions that were created back in that time were removed. So I think there's a history of accommodation for the roadway. I guess that's my point of order for the opportunity here to plead my case. I would like to see the, it's probably only about 400, 450 feet of roadway that feeds to the entrance to my property from Holton Road. There's another parcel, another road, part of the roadway, Judson Road, on the east side of Holton, that's currently been abandoned by the county also. I don't have any interest in that property, but I do have a neighbor who is concerned about that. And Judson Road, if you're familiar or not, but it loops around off of Holton Road from the south and then around, and then back to Holton Road. And the portion of his roadway that's been abandoned breaks that loop so that people that might traverse Holton Road to Judson Road and then try to get back to Johnson Road can no longer get back to Johnson Road. So it's created a dead end in the area that has, gonna create a traffic issue. Drainage is also an issue. Holton Road being elevated and Judson Road coming to the west, down to my property, there's a tremendous amount of runoff in that area that has to be accommodated down to the catch basin, the old Cableton Drain. You all might be familiar with the Cableton Drain. The Cableton Drain is no longer a maintenance issue for the county, no longer a budget item, if I understand correctly. But the Cableton Drain does accommodate a lot of runoff on Johnson Road. And on Johnson Road, there's a low area, just down at the base of our parking area, that floods regularly. And maintaining the drainage to that area is important for travel. Johnson Road being one of the most heavily traveled roadways in LaPorte County. Maintaining the drainage in that area is important. And Judson Road is certainly attributable to that drainage. So I'm just here to try to plead my case, to see if there's any way we can accommodate keeping that lane, which again is serviced to two business properties and two residential properties in service, if at all possible.
Okay, so what I can tell you is I'm gonna have you just step over to the side and give your phone number.
Okay.
To our assistant, and she'll take your phone number.
Okay.
We're gonna have the attorney call you, because I know that the Highway Department has had some dialogue with us over that.
Okay.
But this is not usually where we answer. We let the public come up and.
I understand.
Say comments, and then we'll have you.
Okay.
Talk to them as well.
Very good, thank you.
So just stop with Diane, and she'll be able to take your number down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comment is still open. Is there anyone else that would like to come up for public comment? Seeing no one coming up to the podium, I will close public comment. Department head comments. Do we have anyone for department head comments?
Good evening. Jeremy Sabecki from the Parks Department. Since I was here for an line item, I thought I'd give a little update on our electric vehicles that we purchased about three months ago. We got two for the Parks Departments. They're all, all four of these are F-150 Lightnings, fully electric vehicles. Two for the parks, one for MS4, and one for the building department. I'm just basically gonna talk about the two for the Parks Department. Received the trucks at the beginning of May, so we've had them for about three and a half months. Both of our trucks have about 3,000 to 4,000 miles on them, using NIPSCO rates. So we upgraded our chargers so that we would be able to kind of track the use of them and how much it's costing us compared to, you know, to be more specific about whether or not this is really a good deal for us. But using, you enter your NIPSCO rates that we're being charged, and it estimates the electric costs are about 10 cents per mile. Whereas at $3 a gallon, a similar truck, a similar F-150 would cost about 15 cents a mile in gas. So we're saving about 5 cents a mile. So so far, just in three and a half months, we're saving, we saved about $375 in fuel. Transferred some electric costs over, but we're saving, you know, all of that fuel. Other savings, there'll be no oil changes, very little routine maintenance on these electric vehicles compared to internal combustion, no trips to town to get gas, or, you know, to the Highway Department, no waiting for fuel ups. Found these electric trucks in the parks to be very useful because, I mean, at job sites, remote job sites, you can plug in, right, you know, plug your tools right into them and charge, or charge your batteries for your cordless, cordless tools. I wouldn't recommend them for full-scale replacement of all the trucks. I do think they have a place in our kind of government workforce or fleet. But each vehicle would have to be evaluated very carefully as to whether those would work in that situation. I wouldn't buy one personally, because I travel too much. These things have about a 250-mile range, so that's something you gotta, you gotta think about, you know, whether or not that's gonna be work for us for a workday, you know. So just, the trucks were just under $50,000 apiece. The county put in about 20,000, and then the grant funded about 28,000 of each of those trucks. Public charger, we also put in a public charger with this at Creek Ridge County Park. That was grant-funded, about 12,000. County funds about 9,000, and then my park non-reverting was about 2,400. Then the other upgraded chargers that we bought for the, for our trucks, the Ford trucks, costed about $6,000 total between the two chargers to install and everything. The county put forth, so I wanted to thank the Commissioners and the Council, the county put forth $90,000 for four trucks and a charger. That, you know, for full-size trucks, that's a pretty good deal for four trucks, let alone the public charger. So that, you know, that's about, you know, we put in $22,500, basically for four vehicles. Each vehicle. That's pretty darn good price for a truck. I'm estimating that over the life of these vehicles, say they last 150,000 miles, the county will save about $30,000 in fuel costs alone. Not to mention routine maintenance, oil changes, all of those kinds of things that you don't end up having to do with these. So potentially about $3,000 to $4,000 a year for those four trucks. Like I said, I wouldn't suggest we go all to electric, but, but I do think in the right situation, they are gonna be a good, a good deal for the, for the county. So, any questions on that before I go on to something else, or? Okay. Wanted to just update you quickly on our, some foundation, park foundation items that we're doing. Recently, they approved a new golf cart for us to replace. We had two really old, probably 25-year-old side-by-sides that were, I would say barely operational. They're, they're operational, but they're, they were, they were getting very, very old. So they bought us, they bought us a golf cart that will be used at Creek Ridge County Park. That was about $11,600, and then donated it to the Parks Department. And then they also agreed to pay for new roofing and siding on the Novak Shelter at Creek Ridge, and that was $18,800. So about $30,000 worth of donations right there. They also are doing, were doing several projects at Lure this year, funded by them. They paid for a prescribed burn in the Sedge Meadow on the south 15 acres of the property. That was $2,600. New bridges, and we're putting in some new trails into that 15 acres down there. Probably another, they've spent about $13,000, $14,000 on that already. And then some invasive species removal. So, but, and then they approved some, the viewing tower of the wetland, they approved $25,000 for that as well. That may not get done this year, but it's in the works. Last year, they, at Bloom County Park, they put new roofing and siding on the Morgan Shelter. That was, let's see, that came to $16,000. And did some concrete work there as well, and then invasive removal, and replaced another boardwalk that was in bad shape first. They approved almost $40,000 worth of work there last year. So, foundation is, we don't always come and praise how much they're doing in our parks, but a lot of the, a lot of that money is through donations, and then money they've earned from donations through investments and things like that. So lots of, lots of good things going on.
Saves taxpayer a lot of money with that foundation.
Yes, that foundation. Some donations over the years, big donations over the years, for, especially for Lure and Bloom, have made those parks, given those parks a big jump, and a lot of improvements that the county taxpayers aren't having to pay for. So, all right.
Well, thank you for coming up here and sharing that information with the public.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? No other department heads? We'll close department head comments. Request. Request permission to approach the council for additional appropriation for a new printer.
That actually, it's a copier, not a printer. Mr. Campbell put the wrong thing down in the request. And also in that request, it says with the next commissary meeting, he meant the council meeting for August 25th. So I make a motion, and we accept that.
I'll second that. We covered that at our community corrections board meeting.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, on Monday.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider permission to travel to Nashville, September 9th through the 11th, for Beacon Schneider Geo Parcel Conference. Daniel Barnes. Do you want to speak, or?
Good evening.
Evening.
Yeah, so Beacon Schneider, as we all know, Beacon is a huge part of the county and our mapping system. This is an opportunity to get to know a lot of them in person, as I'm new to the position, as well as learn a lot of their new software, a lot of the new capabilities, and get some hands-on training directly with them as well.
And that's gonna help you to set up the GIS system for the county then, correct?
Yeah, especially continuing forward when we.
The 921 and all them?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of new integrations.
What's the pleasure of this board?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Consider demolition of building on Red Mill Park property.
Welcome back.
Hi. Yeah, so we have a house on Red Mill County Park property that's been there for, since before it was a park. And in the past years, ever since I've been here, there's been a resident there that took care of Red Mill, cleaned it on weekends, plowed, those kinds of things. The house is getting in bad, pretty bad shape. Steve has been out and seen it. And honestly, I think it was getting to the point where it was costing us more to have him living there than it was worth having him do the work he was doing. And it would cost us many thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to fix this place up. And I don't think we should be in a, my board, I, all of us, do not think we should be in the landlord business, for the liability of the county and everything else. So we asked them to move, they moved out, so it's empty currently. And like I said, this has been going on for 15, 16 years, you know, well before I was there. But, so, I'd like to tear it down. I think I sent all of you an email with pictures and those kinds of things. I'd like to tear it down and eventually put a pole barn in its place, so that all of our shop area and maintenance area is right there together. And then we would tear down an old, old pole barn that's down by the lake, by the pond, that has the gazebo that was moved from, if you remember, quite a while back, we moved the gazebo from the Michigan City Courthouse when they did their renovations to that location. And it's in a great location, but there's a barn right there. And eventually, I'd like to get that barn out of the public area so that it can be up by where it's around all of our maintenance area. So I'd like to see if we can tear that down. County Highway did, did say they could help us tear it down. They've done that for us in the past on buildings and, and an old homestead that was there from the 1800s. So I think that would be a, you know, we would be able to, we wouldn't have to ask for money to tear it down. We could get dumpsters, and they could, they could tear it down for us, and we would pay for the dumpsters. That'd be about it.
So I took a tour with Jeremy, and it, it's, the house is in bad shape. And I agree with him to tear it down. And right there with the County Highway, you working together, that shows interdepartmental, you know, helping each other, and wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything, because you're gonna take care of the park foundation funds, right?
It'd be your, probably our non-reverting funds.
Non-reverting?
Yeah, so it's the revenue we bring in.
Okay.
So yeah, that would be, we would probably pay for that.
I make a motion, we allow him to tear that barn down, the house down.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Highway Department always. They, they're always willing to help us, even if it's changing light bulbs or cutting trees away from lights or whatever with the lift truck. They're, they're, they're great, and have been great to the Parks Department for, for years. So thank you.
They really do help out a lot of different departments.
In ways that people don't realize. We put in a playground at Bloom one time, and they dug out the base for it, you know, and, I mean, saved tens of thousands of dollars.
Very fortunate.
Yep, we are. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No old business, moving on to new business. Consider settlement in Serenic versus Stables/Laporte County Commissioners. Mr. DiMartino?
Yes, Commissioners, after I went to the hearing last week, I sent you a detailed memorandum. Came to an agreement in form, which I presented to you. The total amount of the settlement would be $2,828.69, and I recommend that you give me the authority to wrap this matter up.
What's the pleasure?
I make a motion, we instruct Mr. DiMartino to approve or settle this. This loss will bring us to a close then, correct?
All done.
All done.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider Sandoz opioid settlement.
So the Sandoz settlement, as you know, and the opioid cases were represented by Cohen and Malad. And there's a global MDL settlement, and they recommended that the county enter this agreement.
What's your recommendation, Mr. DiMartino?
I recommend it also.
Same as well.
No.
Do we have a dollar amount on this yet, or?
We don't.
Okay.
And this is. It's gridded. All those are gridded.
And this is a nationwide settlement, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's MDL, but it's direct. You see, like, the next one we're gonna talk about is in bankruptcy. So, no.
I'd make a motion to approve the settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider Purdue Pharma opioid settlement.
So Purdue Pharma, if you remember, that was with the Sackler family. And so that is sitting in bankruptcy court. And last year, about 18 months ago, they floated, you see, when it's in bankruptcy, and it's a Chapter 11, there's money, and they have a plan. And about 18 months ago, they provided a plan to the bankruptcy court trustees, and the claimants to the plan, 90% of them denied. So now they've come back with a new plan, which is much fairer to the, to the class or the multi-district, all the different municipalities. And again, counsel who's handling that recommended that that's probably the best it's gonna be, because it's in the bankruptcy court, and you're gonna get pennies on the dollar as it is. And I don't have the amount.
Will this one have to be handled differently than the first one?
It is gonna, it's gonna go through the bankruptcy trustee.
So then the trustee will decide how much money goes to where?
How it's divvied up, yes.
I make a motion that we accept this claim and pursue it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
On these two settlements, there is a docu-sign. So I will forward those docu-signs to Madam President for signature, and they need to be submitted by the end of this month.
Okay, thank you. Consider gap calculation contract with Baker Tilly. Would you like to speak on it?
It's very quick. Due to our county size, we are required to file our financial statements on a GAAP basis. For the last four years, we were allowed to file, or maybe more, on what they call a regulatory basis. Regulatory's cash basis, whatever we receive and whatever we pay out. That was done because we fell behind, and in order to get the audits done, which they are trying to wrap up, the 24 audit now, currently. They're looking to be out of our space in early September, so that it's all done by the end of September. And so this is needed to do, we need to get a new start at the beginning of '25. So they look at the 123124 numbers, and we need assistance. There is over 100 items in there that we need assistance on, because we have to redo all new footnotes, and then we'll have to do the same thing at the end of the year. So this is contract will help us do that.
I make a motion, we accept that contract?
I'll second that. Can, just for the record, can we get a reminder on the, on what the cost of that contract is?
Yeah, the, the cost of the contract is approximately $60,000 plus.
Right. And Mr. DiMartino, I know you had a question, you brought up a point about some potential liability, the way it's described, if there's an issue. Could you expand on that?
Sure. So apparently, the CPA, insurance companies are making all the accounting firms put a limitation of liability in their contract. So what that contract says is if something should happen where you have a claim. So apparently, the CPA, insurance companies are making all the accounting firms put a limitation of liability in their contract. So what that contract says is if something should happen where you have a claim against Baker Tilly for some type of negligence, that it's the limit of your damages would just be the extent of the contract amount. So I just pointed it out that it's out there, and it seems to be, according to Michael, it seems to be something that's getting to be real common in professional services for accounting firms. So you just need to know that, that it's out there.
If, is there the potential for the county to be open to more liability than, than the $60,000?
There's always the potential, but you hope that they're doing a good job. And so if it's a regulatory agency, so for instance, if, if you're doing GAAP accounting, and so if somebody, a regulatory agency comes in, like the SBOA, and has findings, and, you know, they, they helped you with that, or they help you put that together, I think that you have a very strong defense to any type of finding that you relied on the professional. So I, I don't know that there would be any fees. There could be potential fines, so any type of fines or administrative fees, should they have done something wrong, would be capped up to the amount of the contract.
And this is a long, well-standing company, so I, I don't think there's much potential.
Right. And so for the work that they're doing, typically, I mean, they don't pay your taxes, they don't tell you how much, you know, taxes to pay, things along those lines. So I don't see a ton of liability that would come down. If there would be any type of liability, it would be maybe being fined for untimely reporting or things like that. So I, I think it's okay, but you just need to know that it's out there.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question. Mr. Rosenbaum, obviously, you don't have the money in your budget for this, and I know that our, we're strapped, you know, we're, we're very limited. Would you be willing to go with me to the council to request?
I have no problem. We were planning on doing that.
Okay.
We were gonna put out for an appropriation and request the funding.
Okay, perfect. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none.
Actually, should we, should we then, since we don't have funding secured, make the motion contingent upon funding from the council?
Yeah, you can say it's approved, contingent on the council appropriating the monies.
All right, I'd make that amended motion, then.
I'll second that amendment.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. And finally, 8th Street, discussion on 8th Street.
I, I met Clerk Stevens over there, because I've just got questions about why the county's owning property. I don't think governments own any more property than they have to. So I took a tour over there, see what's, gets stored over there. It, it's quite extensive what's stored there, but I think it can be done. She requires it to be secure and climate-controlled. I think we can do it cheaper, then possibly put that building up for sale and dump it and move on and get off underneath it, and then we won't have to maintain it, do anything with it. And if we have to, we could possibly build a smaller shed on the fairgrounds or somewhere on other county property, or possibly even renting something would be cheaper than owning and maintaining a building. So that's just discussion I'd like to have on it.
I think you bring a good point. We've been trying to dispose of that property for several years, well, at least a few years now, and, you know, something keeps coming up. You know, we had the floods, so we moved some things in there. We had all this extra equipment that they got for the elections, all those printing machines and all the, all the other pole pads, things like that. So we definitely have used it while we've had it, but at the same time, I do, I'm along the same lines as you're thinking, that we can probably come up with a better way to store that stuff. And that, that property is, as far as I'm concerned, is fairly prime property right there next to the Outlet Mall. It's, you know, that area is, you know, with the double tracking and some other stuff, you know, they're projecting at least, and hopefully they're right, that, you know, that area will be booming again, and hopefully we can put that, put that to good use, and it can be used for better purposes.
And one other thing, too, I think if, if we do not have excess storage space, maybe then some departments would not want to hold on to some things that they're holding on. So we found things in the courthouse basement that we've gotten rid of now, in the higher building basement, when that had some issues there, they got rid of property they didn't, didn't really need. So I think, I think in the long run, it would be better for the county, because even if we, if we sell it for, say, I'm just throwing numbers, for $250,000, which is less we paid for it, but my job, my business, you cut your losses, move on, build something for 50, put the other 200 back in the general fund for the help, because we're gonna be needing something in the future to help this county.
So for the public to know, I think in all fairness, we paid 600, a little bit under 650,000, maybe 648,000 for this building. The clerk is not the only one currently storing over there, so I don't know if you've spoken to all the departments that are, are storing there.
Who else is there I have to speak to?
So I believe the courts.
Right, I'll speak to them.
And so again, I mean, I don't know, we're having a discussion right now, but I think that when we did have the flood, that building does not cost us anything. And to have a building in reserve, if we had back in 2020, we had had that flood, and we had to move everything, or 2022, we had to move departments very quickly. It's, it's comforting to have that when a building's not costing us anything. But again, I will, you know, we will entertain whatever the council, whatever the commission, the full commission decides.
Building does cost something because we are insuring it, we are putting utilities in it, so it, everything, every asset you own has a cost. And maybe we can get more for it, I don't know, but I looked at the building, and I think it's in kind of rough shape. So just, just an opinion, that's why I want to discuss it.
I think, I'm, I'm not quite sure what value took place on the building, but the property itself is some pretty decent real estate. It's a nice footprint right next to there. You know, the land, the land may be worth more than the building, but I, I would think, you know, some, some, depending on what the thoughts of the board here are, you know, starting to take a look at maybe some sort of seeking out an appraisal, something like that, to get an idea of just, just what we're looking at, to see, you know, the best path.
Mr. DiMartino, what would be our next, next step?
Well, I mean, are you looking at putting it up for sale? Or is your next step just meeting with the other stakeholders to talk to them? So I guess I need to know.
I'll meet with the other stakeholders, but then would we have to, because I mean?
You'd need two appraisals.
Need two appraisals, then, okay.
Yeah.
But I'll meet with the stakeholders and talk to them.
If the board were to do something like that, you're gonna need two appraisals.
Okay. No, I will, I will start making meetings tomorrow, set something up to talk to the other stakeholders.
Okay, so is that a motion?
I, I would think that my motion would be to just table this to the next meeting till we can gather some more information and then, and then go from there.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to table this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.